Thank you so much. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we begin this time thanking you, God, for the many blessings of life. As the scriptures remind us that every good and perfect gift is from above and comes down from the Father of lights with whom there is no variation or shadow of turning. And so, God, we acknowledge that we would have nothing, we would be nothing without you. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us. And this evening, as we begin our time here to discuss the business of our community, God, we just pray that our Board of Commissioners would have the wisdom, the courage, all that they need to do what is right and what is beneficial to all and what is pleasing in your side. God, we also pray for our nation, especially this evening, as we are about to go on our election day. Many have already voted, others are still waiting to do. God, we pray that each of us will understand the importance of exercising the right to vote. Our prayer, God, is that your will would be done in our nation. And when all is done, help us, Lord, to stay united as one nation under God. And finally, God, we pray for our servicemen and women all over the world. God, as we are facing some difficult times, we just pray, God, for your protection upon them. We pray, God, for your provision for their families that are here. And help us always to appreciate them for all that they do for us. Once again, God, we pray for your blessing on our time together. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, um, it will take one minute here for Ms. Perry to do an introduction.
Yes, sir. Um, can I have Mr. Bob Roche come up for a minute? Front and center. So, um, Commissioners, this is Mr. Bob Roche. He is our new Chief Building Code, Code Enforcement Officer. He started with us in July, but he had not had the opportunity to come meet you all. So I wanted to just have him come meet you all tonight. He's doing an excellent job thus far. So anything you want to say?
Thank, uh, Ms. Perry, and thank you for having me. It's been an honor so far and a blessing to be here. We're doing great things so far. We've got a lot to accomplish. But you've given me the tools to get it done. And we're going to make the county a better place with all the changes and things we're doing. So I appreciate all your help and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Next, we'll have our public comments. We have people signed up to speak tonight. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Uh, when you come to the microphone, uh, please state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. The first one on the list is Angie Ryan.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight. My name is Angie Ryan. I live at 327 Franklin Road, Henderson. I'd like to address a few concerns. You, as Commissioners, were hired by the citizens of Vance County as we elected you to make decisions on behalf, on our behalf, to make our county a better place to live and work. We have entrusted you to make these crucial decisions for us. However, you are employing rulings that are detrimental to the welfare of the citizens of this county. It was stated by one of you that meetings are held and open to the public, and it's up to us to show up. We, the people, are fed up. We are watching. We are showing up, and we deserve answers. Are you meeting in secret to discuss business so that when it comes time to voting in front of citizens, that you already know the outcome? I suggest you be careful with this as it's deceitful and undermining, and you are seriously trusting each other. By law, you haven't allotted time to produce minutes from your meetings. We are waiting for them, especially the meetings, the minutes concerning our tax increase rates. Ninety seconds for you to make the decision to raise the taxes on us tells me one of two things. One, it was discussed in private, and two, it was not worth discussing. Citizens believed you when you publicized a meeting, in a meeting, that the tax increase would be less than what was actually voted on and passed. We are deceived as we had put forth our effort in your word. Many did not appeal nor question because they believed you. We have pleaded our case and asked for you to make it right. The opportunity to address an appeal should be granted, and the 20 cent above revenue should be lowered. I believe you have the ability to do so, and I also believe we deserve representation. With the surplus and the report that I was giving was over $21 million. Please just explain this astronomical amount of a surplus to be added a tax rate increase of what you gave us. The county has received $1.8 million for an opioid grant with another $6.2 million by the end of 2038. The current opioid committee consists of Austin, Faines, and Themster. During the meeting on September 16th, it was stated from Taylor and Kelly a desire to have a more diverse committee in incorporating EMS, Health Department, and Social Services, and et cetera. However, Chairman Brummett, I believe he shot that down stating once, "Discussions progressed on how to spend the funding. It would be appropriate to include these entities." My question, what is the purpose of adding a committee if the decision has already been made by you? Why would anyone desire to be part of a committee without a voice? This type of behavior is why we are questioning your authority now. We are showing up. Of course, I have more, but I thank you, and I'll attend next meeting.
Ms. Tubbs, you're next.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to give you an update. Oh, first, my name is Sandra Butler Tubbs, and I live at 350 South Cokesbury Road. And I am your Senior Tar Heel Legislature Delegate for Vance County. Carson Clark is the alternate for Vance County. We had a meeting in Raleigh in October 8th and 9th. And I've given Kelly copies of what I'm going to send you later this week in an email. But I'm also going to be doing a press release to the Daily Dispatch, which is basically this information. And because this time has been cut to three minutes, I'm not going to read the issues. You can read them, and other people can read them in the paper coming out within the next week, I hope. We are going to take a more active role in letting our priorities be known not only to the legislature next spring, but we're going to be telling people in Vance County. And hopefully, our counterparts in the other counties and region K will be doing the same thing. And because we found out at our 30th anniversary last year that a lot of the legislators didn't know who we were, and a lot of other people didn't know who we were. So as we get older, we need to make sure that people know what we're talking about. And our priorities have gone from five to eight this year. And because as we're getting older, uh, we've got a lot of people who are representing the 100 counties who are in their 70s, 80s, and 90s. And we're looking at different things than we were looking at 30 years ago. So we're really looking at not just providing senior center access and home nursing aids and that kind of thing. We're looking for people to be able to age in their own homes and not go to nursing homes. And we realize that that's going to be cheaper because you can age in your own home and not have to pay millions of dollars for each individual person. It's actually hundreds of thousands. But anyway, that's it. Uh, it's good to see you, and Carson and I say thank you for supporting us to go to the meetings. And he was going to come, but something came up at the last minute. See you next quarter.
Thank you, Ms. Tubbs. Next, we have Laura Perkinson.
My name is Laura Perkinson. My address is 1560 Tully Weldon Road, Henderson, North Carolina. Mr. Brummett, I'd like to say that I'm sorry. You were right. I apologize that I was complacent in letting you all do what you were doing. When we voted, we thought that you guys represented our best interests, and we sat back and let you do what you have done. What progress has been made in resolving the case of embezzled county funds? Have you become complacent in your duties because you've not had opposition? My prayer tonight is that every seat up there is, gets a new candidate in it come election time. It has been noted that the Commissioner with delinquent taxes has paid to date. Surrounding counties have a policy in which a Commissioner may not be delinquent in paying taxes. Perhaps that is an approach Vance County should adhere to as it certainly speaks for the integrity of our Commissioners. How can elected officials expect citizens to abide when you fall short? Tax information is public knowledge, and again, we are watching. I wonder if Mr. Hester, Mr. Brummett, Mr. Austin, any of you others that own multiple properties, did you guys faint pass out when you opened your tax bills this year? I did. There have been reports of only one Commissioner making public showings for ribbon cuttings, promoting business in our community. Where are the rest of you? Perhaps you are not in favor of growth in our community as you will lose your power. Again, this speaks volumes for your character and integrity, and again, we are watching. What progress has been made based on the recommendations from the FIRE study? We deserve answers. As a citizen of Vance County, I'm concerned for the direction in which we are headed and urge you to be more diligent in attending to our needs and making better decisions for our community's growth and prosperity. We, the people, are fed up, and hopefully, it shows when comes time for election for those seats. Thank you.
Carolyn Burnett.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Burnett. I live at 1825 Summit Road. There's two things I'd like to address. First of all, I attended the opioid settlement meeting, which I understand there's $1.8 million in the fund to use at this time. Commissioner Brummett was very gracious to let me know that there were talks between the city and the county to move forward with a treatment center at one time. However, it was after the administrative change in the city that the plan pretty much fell apart. Now, I know how hard it is to work with the city. I've been to the city council meetings. However, I will implore you, as well as I will implore the city, to set aside your egos and extend an olive branch for those who need it the most. We have the funds. They are there. We will have more funds. There have been no meetings that have been held by that committee. Zero. No meetings. I came to the opioid settlement meeting, and that there had been no meetings, and the county manager had stated that there had been no meetings along with Commissioner Brummett. It's time to act on those funds. We really need it in Vance County. I see it every single day right across the street. The tax value reevaluation solution is still on the table. Again, I would request that you direct the tax administrator not to take action on delinquent taxes if in 2024, the 2023 amount is paid. I've been questioned about those who have already paid their taxes and would hope that a credit for 2025 would be available to all of those who have paid that amount. That's only fair. I understand it's more work for the county to do, but it's not as much more work and money as a foreclosure would be on these individuals. I've also been, uh, told that there is a particular Commissioner that is questioned by motives. And I quote, "Why does she care? She can pay her taxes." Yes, ma'am, I can pay my taxes. And any Commissioner who wants to question my motives, come have a conversation with me. Mr. Brummett did. We had a great conversation the other day. Come ask me. Because like you, I'm a public servant. But unlike you, I am standing up for what is right and for what is fair. For the retirees who are on a fixed income, for the young family who can no longer afford their taxes, and for those families who can no longer take a vacation because they have to pay their taxes. As public servants, we all have a duty to stand up for our fellow citizens, even when it's hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Next, we have Lee Chandler.
My name's Lee Chandler, and again, I am one of 10 generations to reside at 4568 Hicks Borough. I addressed you all last month, and I'm glad for y'all to, able for me to address y'all this month. I've been sending emails. I've been sending emails. Week and a half. I got one email returned. My own county Commissioner, Ms. Fane. Mr. Hester, I appreciate you. Ms. Fanes, I appreciate y'all getting back to me. Week and a half. Nobody else comes back to me. Why? Why? I'm a citizen of this county, a taxpaying citizen in this county. I feel ignored. Y'all don't respond to us. Period. Send an email. Ms. Perry sent back, "Above and beyond what the state requires, what is the surplus of Vance County?" Twenty, over $21 million. Why do you need an increase? I looked up. Some of y'all's taxes increased 6%, 16%, 31%. Mine increased 129%. 120, went from $800 to almost $2,000. But you got $21 million in the bank, above and beyond what the state requires. That's not my words. It straight comes from the county manager. Why? And again, I'll ask the same questions I asked last week. What do I get from my taxes? The answer is nothing. Nothing. $21 million. $21 million in Vance County in surplus. I want to leave you tonight with one quote. Calvin Coolidge, President of the United States. And I quote, "Collecting more taxes than absolutely necessary is legalized robbery." Thank you.
Brian Yott. Thank you, Ms. Yott. Sarah Bacus Lee.
Hi. My name is Sarah Lee. I live at 98 West Mill Creek Lane in Henderson, North Carolina. And I'm not going to pretend to know what it's like to be you, and I'm not going to point fingers. I've never served on the county commission. I am a veteran of the United States, so I have served my country, though, and I thank you for your service. I am requesting that the Board allows citizens to pay the same amount in their property taxes as we did last year with no penalty of delinquency. And my understanding is that you have the authority to do that. Here are my reasons for this request. I feel the timeframe for requesting an appeal was unfair as we, as citizens, only had half of the equation. We had the revaluation of the properties, but we did not have the tax rate. We were led to believe that that would all balance out, and it did not. In addition, according to meeting minutes of the Board, the approved rate was 0.633 on May of 28th and was increased, according to my bill, to 0.7129 without any indication that I could see of Board approval. The only mention of the new rate was by Ms. Carolyn Faines in the June 24th meeting, more of as a comment, not an indication of approval. I've done some research about taxes in our community, and here's an interesting fact I found from the 2023 U.S. Census. And that is that Vance County sales assessment ratio for homeowners is 0.5497, meaning that if my house appraised for $500,000, it would most likely sell for about $275,000, not the appraised rate. That is according, if you need to look it up, the 2023 U.S. Census information. Another fact is that Vance County employees got a 7% increase. I work for the state. My increase was 3%. You gave yourselves an increase of 23% in travel allowance. I would like to know what the justification for this increase is considering other servants did not get such an increase. My tax bill went up 67%, and I know of people whose tax bill went up 200% or more. People, including me, are devastated and hurt. We elected you to look out for our best interest as citizens of the county. How is the tax rate and these drastic increases on our bills in our best interest? In closing, I reiterate my request to allow citizens to pay the same amount as they did in 2023 without penalty of delinquency, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Yott. Thank you for your service. Next, we have Rhonda Davis.
My name is Rhonda Davis. I live at 647 Bullisville Park Road in Manson, 27553. I came to ask that this county board give us a moratorium so that special use permit will not be granted on November 14th because they did not make any decision because of the people that came. And we made so much noise, and we put up with records that they put off the vote. And if I understood what I read, if y'all give us a moratorium tonight, they cannot do anything. They cannot move forward with their special permit. This moratorium can be set up for at least one year. And, um, the reason I'm asking is because I do live on Bullisville Park Road. We are older people. I'm 60. My husband is 77. We do not need a soda farm in our backyard. And the proposals that they are coming up with are not appropriate. 200 feet is not a good enough distance. They have not talked about the habitat laws. We have deal. They jump all year. They say the product is going to last two and a half years just for construction. There are going to be no barriers. We have wetlands in the back of my property. It's going to be pollution in there. They're going to cut down trees. They're going to scrape the ground to the end. Then they're going to put up all that mess, so it don't make no sense. Visual pollution. Are the people that come and ride their boats on Car Lake, are they going to like to see that? No. Are the people that live on the lake, do they want to hear that pounding day in and day night? No. It's a fail to the people that live on White Farm Lane to have all that, and then they don't even have a good, decent turnaround point. And then that mess they're talking about, are we going to give y'all $7,500 for the maintenance of the road? They already paid $9,300 for the maintenance of the road, so how is that right? A disruption in daily life. This company is for profit. If this soda farm goes into place, we, we not, we don't benefit. We do not benefit. This is sold to other places that need power. So this is sitting out here in the middle of our neighborhood where older people live, where black people live. It's not fair to us. It's videos all over the internet. One particular that was done by Spectrum from last year where the runoff of the water is contaminating other people's streams and ponds. There are, again, like I said, wetlands in the back of my property. There's weather risks. Who knows with all this going on? North Hampton County, that includes Jackson, Gaston, have approved a moratorium, and they just did it on June 27th. So I am asking that we need a moratorium. We can have outright ban. We already have 21, 20 soda farms. What benefit have we received? What are all these benefits, empty promises that they are saying are going to come on behalf of this? Duke Power is standing to make lots of money. CCR is standing to make lots of money. How many y'all live on the Bullisville Park Road? How many y'all live on White Farm Lane, one way in, one way out? And then they had, okay, I know my time is over, but Drury showed up, okay? Now, Drury don't respond to us. Drury, Fire Department is in Warren County. They don't respond. They showed up at the meeting. Where was the Vance County people? I'm sorry. This need to be seriously considered. I have seen nothing that have benefited us. Ragged roads out there, contamination of whales. Y'all need to think, y'all need to think hard. Y'all don't want to hear. We old people, nobody want 500 acres full of soda panels and all these big things to connect, collect all this power. It ain't a farm, it's a power plant. We get absolutely no benefit, only the landowners, the CCR and Duke Power, and they would not be passing on anything to us because our light bills have gone up. And if anybody looked at their light bill, it went up plus an extra fee now.
Ms. Davis, I have to ask you to stop.
I, I understand that, but I'm going to finish what I'm saying. I don't care you sitting there because I got just much right to say in this day and time.
Next, we have Mary Susan Williams.
Good evening. My name is Mary Susan Williams. I live at 109 West Lake Drive inside of the city limits. Have a couple of things I'd like to say. The people of Vance County deserve answers. Why did you change the tax rate behind closed doors? Why did you tell people, including the revaluation adjuster, that the tax rate would be favorably adjusted? Revaluations and appeals were delivered before the rates were set. Why? Did you have any communication with the city council regarding their tax rate? Those of us that live inside the city limits were doubly hit, which you would think there would be some conversation there regarding county and city. And how can you answer us? How do we get on the agenda? How do we not just stand up here and speak and ask questions and go sit down and come back next month and say the same thing? Because where is there a way for you to answer us? Uh, communication is the key. A roundtable discussion, a public forum, something to give people answers that they are looking for from their elected officials. And you are entrusted with our financial well-being. Our votes gave you the power to make decisions for the people you represent, us. Being misled by our elected officials creates doubt and creates distrust. The people of Vance County have every right to feel deceived when you say one thing and then do another behind closed doors, and it affects citizens financially in a negative way. It's called breaking our trust. Can you say you have been transparent? Can you say you have been honest? Can you say you have been ethical? Can you say you have acted with integrity? You have placed a terrible burden on many of your people. Can we count on you to right a wrong? Can you do it? Yes, you can do it. You have the power. Will you do it? That's what we're waiting to see.
That's all the public comments, uh, for tonight. The next item on our agenda is an appointment for Major Johnny Hawkins. He's our Vance County Detention Center. Welcome, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, sir. Right, I first want to start off by thanking the Commission for allowing me to be here, Madam Manager, Assistant County Manager, and Sheriff Rain. I can certainly tell it's a lot of passion in which the citizens of this community speak. And I will stand before you and be no less passionate in regards to the things that I want to speak about, which is the state of detention address. So there's some discussion points that I have. And then, of course, I'll entertain any questions that you may have. First and foremost, to Sheriff Breen, who was recently the recipient of the Dogwood Award from the Attorney General Josh Stein. But then also for allowing him an opportunity, for allowing me an opportunity to come here and serve this community. I, I have some lineage in this community. My father was born in Henderson, as was his father and family. And I think that after my retirement from the Department of Adult Corrections, 30 years and two years as the Chief of Detention at Durham County Detention Center, that was the thing that drew me to Vance County, an opportunity to serve in the land of my father. On a daily basis, we develop strategies in order to manage the collective body of detainees that's at the detention center, which has exceeded capacity. Our bed capacity is 148. Today, our population was 190. On an averaged daily population in the month of September, October, we were at 190 beds. I have done enough research to understand that the elephant in the room is certainly the desire and the need for a new detention center. And my argument will not prevent that conversation from continuing, nor does my desire and hopes that that will come to fruition will not come into existence. But my reality is today's destination is my journey, which means we have to deal with what we are dealing with today, which is a physical plant that has the linear design that's not conducive for our supervision. So some of the things that I want us to accomplish with this conversation tonight is the desire to rebrand the image of the Vance County Detention Center and the professionals that work there. Now, if you look to the rear of the chambers, you will see several of our employees. And I'm certainly thankful for those body of auspicious professionals that come to work every day. We have a staffing pattern that reads 82, but our current staffing pattern is 41 total. And that's with total positions. A numerical breakdown, which is the most significant entity of our operations, is the detention officer. We have 27 detention officer positions, and 20 of those positions are vacant. Another important entity would be our control center operators. We have 28 of those positions, and we have eight vacancies there. I'm thankful for Sheriff Breen giving me an opportunity to oversee and manage the day-to-day operations of the county's most secure building. And what I asked, the commission, and certainly the county manager, has stood on that line with us, not only with the 7% rage, which was appreciative, but we must do more. But the reality of it is, is on tonight's watch, we've got two people in that building that's providing supervision to 190 individuals. Now, that's not an isolated incident. That is routine. On my first shift, which I've got some of my watch commanders on first shift, I have a sergeant, and they're supposed to have six officers, and they have zero officers. So the collective body of lieutenants and captains and day shift staff assemble themselves in order to get our mission done every single day. So again, I welcome the opportunity and discussion and dialogue in regards to a new detention center. But as I said, today's destination is our journey. We've got to deal with it every day. And as I shared with Sheriff Breen and so many of the staff, the one thing that I fear is failure. And every day that I walk into that detention center, I see some gradual change, but not enough change to make me feel comfortable enough not to want to present myself to each one of you all here tonight. I started my service with Vance County on April the 22nd. So I've just gone over my six-month period of service. I feel good about the direction in which we're going, but again, my appeal is an opportunity to rebrand. I know that I have read an article from the Daily Dispatch and had the young man come out and gave him a site visit throughout the facility because I recognize when I talk to the citizens of this county, the citizens of this county, when I try to recruit and retain, as well as our captain who's been here for a while, the lieutenants have been here for a while. So I'm somewhat the new person on the block, but I feel their pain. And the thing that I do, I applaud them every single day because I'm not sure if I would have stuck out for the fight as long as they have with the deficiencies, not only in staffing, but also the physical plant. But in my attempt to rebrand, there was no article that was provided that I thought would occur, where we could talk about our mission. So tonight gives me that opportunity to share with you all some of the things that we are doing in the detention center. We're trying to upgrade our security profile and systems. We're upgrading or making recommendations to upgrade our physical plant by incorporating a jail management system or rounds tracking system. What that does is allows us to be more efficient at our obligations with our two rounds every hour. That becomes a challenge when you have no officers. Also, we're looking at upgrading our surveillance and security camera systems, which there is some appropriation of funds for that. So I thank the board, thank the county manager, thank Sheriff Breen for that. The hesitation of some of the vendors to come out and do the work has been problematic, but yet we still keep moving along. The implementation of an access control system, which will allow us an opportunity to have monitors and cameras and eventually my desires to have a private security company, unfortunately, search the staff that come into the building. Our profession has basically disintegrated to the point where we have to sometimes search the keepers of the gate. But that access control, being able to go back and identify individuals that may try to bring in contraband and real-time information to know who's entering and exiting the facility will help in our accountability. Our life safety systems, the fire system, the exhaust system is also paramount. Perimeter security system so that we won't have any throwovers, looking at elevating fence and also putting a different layer, another layer inside of the already perimeter security that we currently have. Power DMS, which is a system that's a data management system that will help us with training, help us develop policies, help us with personnel oversight and information so that we can have better processes in place so that we can effectively manage not only our personnel, our resources, but also update our policies so that staff can have direct access. Our mobile, our mobility data specification sales sense devices will detect forensic metals and other instruments so as to prevent contraband from coming into the facility. That will also aid our Tech 84, which we currently have at the facility, where we X-ray the detainees coming in and out of the facility to reduce the contraband. And we're also looking at less than lethal munitions. As the level of threat sometimes exists, we have to be able to neutralize the situation in a fair, humane manner. Radios and repeaters, communication is problematic where because of the design of the facility and the antiquated state of the facility, sometimes a radio transmission from our processing area doesn't reach down to our housing areas. So these are things that we are trying to certainly upgrade our security system so that we can safeguard our staff and the detainees and stakeholders who come into the facility. Part of that is reclassification of some positions, looking to get a program manager, social worker. So that $1.8 million funds that some of the citizens have talked about, we want some of that money to come into the detention center so that we can address the drug problems with the detainees that come in routinely. A peer support specialist that I worked with at Durham. Did he step out? Okay. Right there. And this gentleman here has lived experience. So the impact that he has on the population right now, he's been volunteering, coming in. But he worked with me at Durham, and he's a resident here of Vance County. And when I knew that I was coming, I immediately called him and said, Mike, I need you to come and help us out. So periodically, he comes in and he volunteers in the detention center, and he talks to the detainees about real-life situations. And you can ask any staff member, his impact that he has on that population, being able to correlate and relate, has been instrumental. So I'm looking at getting a full-time or either part-time position for a peer support specialist. We lived experience. And certainly, we have one maintenance technician who is responsible for the entire facility plus the grounds, so another facility maintenance technician. All of this is an opportunity for us to be more efficient at what we do and how we do our work. The increase of programs that's been driven by the staff. Oftentimes, I'll sit down with the captain, who again is, would be my right hand. And we talk about the things that would enhance not only the relationship, but the opportunity to produce a young man or woman that will return back to the community and not have the vices that they potentially came in the system with. So religious services program, which would seem normal, those things currently don't exist. But I've been in some discussion with religious services leaders around the community. We did have a local church come in and speak with our female population and give them some inspirational messages and, and words during Mother's Day. HRD vocational train, HRD and vocational training. Vance Granville Community College, when I was the warden at both Warren as well as Pope, before it turned to Granville, I had an extraordinary relationship with Vance Granville. So that relationship will continue. It's just a matter of having the physical facility where we can have classroom for our detainees to not only have religious services program, but classroom instructions of which does not exist. Veterans, what I found in my 30 years of state services that having veteran housing units has been instrumental in the development of younger inmates and detainees that come in through mentorship. Because one thing about a soldier, a soldier's gonna always be a soldier regardless of their state. And if you recognize them with the dignity. I served five years in the United States Army. So therefore, when I talk to another soldier, I talk to a soldier from the standpoint of where I want him to be or where he should be versus the condition that he's at. But what I have found is that veterans and geriatric units are now needed because you're getting such an age population. So these are things that we're looking at being able to do with the right resources and the right physical plant. Psychological services, we have got several detainees with mental capacities that challenge us in a management situation every single day. And with the limited staffing and limited resources, sometimes we don't necessarily meet those needs the way that I choose or would like to meet the needs. We're involved in community engagement programs, dealing with children of the incarcerated. We're now involved with Shop With A Cop, looking at Angel Tree and how we can, again, service the detainees' families. Because as we all know, while they are in that incarcerated state, life goes on for their families. And then, of course, we're going to, for the first time, have an in-person visit. And it'll be entitled Holiday In-Person Visits, and it'll start during the month of December. So we are looking at our comprehensive approach in order to detention management, not only from a physical plant. Limited resources is, of course, a strain. But then also looking at programs for our detainees because many of them do return into the community. Some quantitative data that the staff researched for me. Our recruitment and retention officer, Lieutenant Wright, provided me with some data in 2004 from January until October 31st. We were able to attract seven detention officer hires. We lost 16 to resignation or termination. Our control centers, four hires. We lost 10 to resignation. Last year, we arrested, we processed 1,236 detainees from January 1st until October the 28th. We have 13 detainees in the detention center that have been in the detention center for four years or more, and the highest has been there for seven years. We have 37 detainees that have been charged with murder that's currently over there being supervised by two staff members. So I applaud this workforce of good. I applaud Sheriff Breen for the opportunity. Madam Manager, Assistant County Manager, for your support. And the commission for all that you all have done. And again, I stand before you asking that we do more. So I open myself up for questions.
Any questions from the board?
Can I make a statement? Mr. Hawkins, you indicated that I was under the impression that probably there were like 65 people there for murder that's been there for some time, but your figure said 37, 37 murder cases. I want to say to those folks who've challenged us as commissioners, and what do you get for your money? You see that I need that what he has just expressed in terms of the needs, in terms of the jail. That is a service that has to be rendered by the county commissioners in seeing that things get done. I, I am appalled that tonight he has two people on watch that are watching in terms of trying to, the safety of them. My concern, Mr. Hawkins, would be the safety of those two individuals.
Yes, sir.
37 people in that facility that happen to be on murders, and those cases are not, and they've been there for a long time. So when the public asks, what are you getting for your money? We're trying to work, people are leaving left and right. He's not able to fill positions. The responsibility of the county is to provide a criminal, a system, a jail detention center that benefits in terms of the community, in terms of your safety and well-being of the community. So when you ask, what are you getting for your money? We're trying to figure out some way in which to use those dollars to listen to his needs, listen to his needs. Those are needs of that detention. If something happens and somebody gets, lose their life behind what's going on, we're faced with a lawsuit as a county in terms of trying to provide that. When you've got people that have been in that facility for over seven years, that is a problem for the folks that are dealing with the jail. I want to touch one other thing in terms of what are you getting for your money? We also have a responsibility providing certain social services benefits to the, for social service. I heard today in terms of meeting, which is heartbreaking, that our foster care program through the social service department is at a critical need. You need to listen to social service in here that overnight is so critical. We've gone from 30 to 92. Now, social service in terms of foster care, there's 102 kids in social service care in Vance County. When those kids do not When those kids do not have a place to go, social services staff stays overnight, provides carts, foods, and get those kids off the school next, the next day. You're asking, what do you get for your money? We're trying to provide for those kids, and those kids do not become citizens. They wind up in his detention, that winds up in his detention center. Mrs. Fame and I happened to have been over one day, one day at the Department of Social Services, and that was a foster care situation. It was so stressing and it was so stressing and heartbreaking. You should have realized here two little, three little kids in the midst of listening to what they were going through. The cuss and the language were appalling, was just appalling. I don't know how the kids survive, but then we were charged as county commissioner to provide an avenue by which those kids are taken care of. So again, that's where your dollars are going, that's where your dollars are going in terms of trying to support social services in terms. Can you imagine your kids sleeping in the Department of Social Service, having staff to sleep with them at night so that they can have food, shelter, and be protected? That's just one, two of the things that as county commissioners that we have to, that we have to deal with. Unfortunately, that as a government agency, that your dollar goes to support. You may not like it, I may not like it and everything, but at the same time, we're trying to make an effort for those. It's a complicated situation, and I just all wanted to say to you that we're trying to do the best we can in terms, you know, in terms of doing that and everything. Again, again, one of the third thing, and I'll shut up in terms of listen to, we don't, in terms of, you also said we don't respond. What I'd like to see in terms that we do, that we are in, we're in agreement in that when there's a statement, we rely on our county manager collectively to speak on behalf, not fragmenting that all of us are telling a different story, that we relied. The reason I don't respond, I put faith in our county commissioner and our, and our county manager to refer things to her so that when you listen, you get, we do the same story. We're not trying to hide anything from you. Of all, I'm a lifelong resident of Henderson, been there all my life and everything in terms of the kind of things that are going on. I'm in your same predicament, you know, my taxes in terms of, my biggest thing, when the city went up 20%. We suggested 10% in order to try to do some of those things that we don't want to come back and have a situation one day where someone comes in and says, you gotta build a jail. You don't have any choice. You gotta tax your citizen, you gotta build a jail, you gotta do something, you gotta do this social service. So we're trying to be proactive and everything. So I regret that you say that we're not responding to you, but we, we, you know, we're trying to deal with it in terms of relying on our county manager, trying to speak in terms of one voice and everything. And so if you want to talk to us, you know, I appreciate you coming and being, and being participants because that's how kind of government works when you participate, when you participate. I thank you for what you do. It may not always be what you want to hear, but at the same time, we're trying to act in terms of what's, what we are dealing with as a county. Thank you. There was not a 20% raise. We got a trap allowance just like everybody else got in terms of other counties, investigate in terms of other counties. In terms, it was not a 20% raise, it was a raise based on what, Renee, based on what, we got what, three? We got a 7% just to the county and everything, so there's no raise. And in terms, you talk about in terms of raise. What I make in terms of count, in terms of volunteers, folks, I give back to Uncle Sam every year. I don't get a penny for doing this.
Chairman Berman, may I sit, or do we have any questions for me?
I'm sorry, I took your thunder.
Yes, sir. Just one thing, I'd like to meet with you. We've got several programs that we're doing through stepping up, and we've got several things that are going on. I'll be happy to meet with you and discuss those more in depth, so that you can, can bring those programs online.
Outstanding, look forward to it, sir.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you all.
Any other questions? All right. Next, we have a public hearing. I believe Lisa Faulner, you're gonna take care of that?
Good afternoon.
He'll be allowed to speak when we have the public hearings.
Yes, how are y'all? Thank y'all for allowing me to be here. This is my first time here after 19 years of service, so I appreciate the time. You have in your information where a public notice was put up for the road name petition for the naming of the information shown to you there on the plat on plat V430. This road name petition, where it requires 75% of the properties to be signing this petition, where they were not able to sign those or they were not willing to. So that's why we're here today. Allowing this pathway here that's showing on the plat V430 will allow us to move forward with addressing Track 5 for Ms. Susan Hernandez, the current property owner. If you allow this to be passed, we'll move forward with that project.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And anyone who wishes to speak, if you please come to the microphone and, and give us your name and address, and then you may speak. Okay, they're proposing to name a road and a subdivision. And so when we do that, there's a public hearing, which people are allowed to speak on, on this issue. And this is the time for the people to speak on that issue. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I'll introduce myself, my name is Daniel Oshburn, I'm an attorney in Oxford. This is my client, Ms. Hernandez, that came to me that wanted help. Ms. Faulner's been very helpful in trying to get this done. If you've got any questions for me about the code, I will defer you to Ms. Faulner. But my understanding is because we didn't have 75% of the adjoining landowners to sign off on the petition, then we then appealed to this body. The general statute 153A-239.1 gives you guys the authority to make this decision when we don't have that 75% vote or 75% approval by the adjoining landowners. So this is the only way that my client, Mr. Hernandez, can get legal access to her property is through this board of commissioners. So I would have my client just ask that this be approved.
Let me clarify that just a little bit, Dan. We're not messing with legal access here. All we're doing is naming a road. Because our addressing ordinance does not provide for a means on how this is to go forward in the situation that we were, we defaulted back to what the general statutes authorized us to do, which is following this procedure. And so what we're here tonight is asking for this road that was established way back when, when this map was originally recorded, and to provide it with a name so that it can be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as that would be the recommendation of the planning.
That is the recommendation of the address and coordinator, yes, thank you.
Any other conversations from the board?
You go on, close the public hearing and ask for, okay.
If there's no other comments, the public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve the Moses Jones Lane.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other conversation, any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next, I'm gonna open the Water District Board. And Ms. Perry? Who's doing that? Logan's doing it, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. Thank y'all for having me tonight. My name is Logan Parsons, L K C Engineering. What we have before you, what you have before you is for the Phase 1B project, this is contract one, which is the water lines. It is a change order, but it's a time-only change order, there's no cost associated with it. We've been, I think I've been in front of you several times over the last year or two about this project. We are in the process of executing contracts with the contractor. One of their items that they've been in constant discussion with is on, if you recall, this, this project was bid over a year ago. It was bid in, I think, March or April of, of last year, 2023. Unfortunately, it was way over budget, we looked at lots of means to do that and, and cut scope without, you know, keeping the project, without totally jeopardizing the project. Long story short, you were fortunate enough, got a state appropriation, state grant to cover the deficit. You were able to award the full scope of the project to this contractor. This contractor was able to hold their prices during, over this whole period, which is 18 months or so. And now we're at the point that we expect construction to start in January. But the contractor's saying, you know, due to the nature of the market changing, their availability of crews and, and just the time it takes to, to get the project done. It is a significantly large project, it's 23 miles of water line in Kitchell. So this is going to commit a lot of their crews and time. So they, what they're asking for is an additional 180 days to the current contract time that they have, which is basically a year, they have a year now, it'll get another six months. So roughly a year and a half, right, for, for total build out of the Phase 1B project. So what we, I'll, I'll offer, avail myself to questions, but tonight is a recommendation and, and ask for your consideration to approve this change order to HG Rentals for 180 additional days of contract time.
Oh, I want to make that motion because let me tell you what, they did it begin with and kept the same price. And we need to go back and help them as much as they've helped us. And that is a firm, it is a local firm, and they controlled it, and we couldn't, and we were hunting and picking, trying to find someone to do this. So I'm gonna make that motion.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hesler.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose, carries.
Very good, thank you much.
Did our Water Commission Committee look at this? Yes, sir, we did, we met, and I think there'll be some other items that we're gonna discuss then. Okay, all right, thank you, Logan.
Very good, you're welcome.
Thank you, Logan. So I have a few items that are just for your information, initially, and something that I'll need a recommendation on. So the first thing, I'm from the Water Committee on Friday. The Water Committee met on Friday, November 1st, 2024, and staff provided an update on current debt and revenues. The signup fee, the recommended signup fee will be the initial 125, like historically, during the signup period, and I'll bring that, I'll bring that back to you all for action to be taken on it at your December 2nd, 2024 meeting. The marketing, marketing strategy for Phase 1B will be the same as previous phases. We'll use social media, the county website and EnviroLink, and schedule town halls to educate and increase signups. Phase 1B, the pre-construction meeting is scheduled for November 6th, 2024, with a walkthrough with USDA at the Kitchell Tower. Following immediately after that meeting, we will coordinate a groundbreaking ceremony before construction begins in early January, just to give opportunity for some elected officials to attend that help with the funding. Lead service inventory, the asset inventory assessment grant has assisted with identifying 262 samples that need to be identified as either lead or non-lead material. Those letters have gone out to all affected Water customers as of last week. And so the last thing on my report is the SCADA system update. The New Hope Tower SCADA system is having some major issues causing EnviroLink to control the tank by filling it by hand daily, and we are unable to find parts or assistance from the new, from the current company. The cost for the New Hope SCADA is $16,652.84. The cost to do both New Hope and Warrington Road Towers is $28,262.36. With both systems upgraded, all of our systems will be on the same system, which can be monitored by county staff and EnviroLink staff via computer or via phone by an app. So the recommendation from the Water Board is to approve, I'm sorry, the recommendation from the manager that came from the Water Committee meeting on Friday is to approve the upgrade to the SCADA systems to mission systems through L K C Services on the New Hope Water Tower and the Warrington Road Tower for the total cost of $28,262.36.
Make that motion. Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose, that motion carries. The only thing left in the Water District Board is the monthly operation report. Does anyone have any questions on that report? If not, we'll close the Water Board. Our Finance Director's report, Ms. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Education Lottery Fund application. A joint application filed by the county commissioners and the Board of Education must be submitted to the state in order to draw down available North Carolina education lottery funds from the Public School Building Capital Fund. The county has budgeted to use lottery funds to pay the debt service for the 2010 QSCB and 2013 QZAB projects. The Board of Education approved the application at its October 24th meeting for $384,775.96. The recommendation, asking for approval, prove the application to draw down lottery funds to be used for debt service payments on existing school facilities debt.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, the motion carries.
Budget amendment number 12. In July 2024, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Child Welfare Division found several deficiencies in the services being provided by the Department of Social Services. These deficiencies were discovered through a recent fatality review and onsite record reviews. Immediate measures were taken to begin addressing practice deficiencies, and a formal corrective action plan was issued to the Department in September of '24. After corrective practice measures began in July of '24 to prevent further abuse, neglect, and/or dependency of children, the number of foster children increased from 67 to 95. The current budget amount for the foster care was established by prior agency administration based on the prior year number of children in care and an increase in standard board rates. Additionally, it was budgeted for one child to be covered under the residential board rate of $4,692. Currently, the agency has seven of these children in this level of placement. So asking for approval for additional $125,000 to cover the cost of the county share of the foster board rates for the '24, '25 fiscal year.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, I will bring to your attention that, that's the 125,000 is the county share. There's an additional $175,000 that the state is putting in, bringing the total increase to 300,000. And I believe the date your report was done said 92, 97, we're up to 102.
So, wow, that was last week.
We've increased over the past, since this agenda was put together. So this is, this is an issue, and it's, it's a serious issue that we've, we've got to get a hold of. And, and so call for a vote, all in favor, aye? Oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Yes, sir. So very short report tonight, the American, the America 250th celebration. So in 2026, the United States will be celebrating the 250th anniversary of signing of the Declaration of Independence. America 250 NC is a program of the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. And they're partnering with local governments and nonprofits throughout North Carolina to mark this anniversary. Many North Carolina counties have already formed official committees dedicated to planning and organizing events, projects, and initiatives at the county level. So Vance County has not yet formed a committee. The committee vacancy will be advertised, members will be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and staff will apply for the No Match Grant to fund proposed projects in 2026. So this is just for your information, just letting you know that we're gonna start the planning process to celebrate as well in 2026.
We don't need to take action much.
You just have to take action when you appoint those to your committee. We'll do, we'll work on that internally.
Nothing else for that, the next item is a consent agenda. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Oppose? The motion carries. Ms. Grissom?
We have several appointee appointments for tonight. Uh, the Vance County Zoning Board of Adjustments reappoint Ruxton Bobbitt and Benny Finch as alternates. The Vance County Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustments, we received two applications, one from James Baines and Dominique Lane as for the District Six vacant position. The Henderson Planning Board, uh, we received two applications from Joanne Evans and Philip Burnett to fill vacant positions. The Henderson Board of Adjustments, an application was received from Justin Robertson to fill a vacant position. The Vance County Housing Authority, uh, an application received from Dominique Lane. And the Via Regional Community Board, uh, appoint D S S Director Sandy Weaver to replace the former D S S Director.
Generally, we take a recommendation, um, from our, the district that's represented on the, with the Vance County Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments, that's District Six. Do you have a recommendation for that? Okay. She recommends Dominique Lane. Okay, um, the rest of them are
We have to choose, right?
You want to make a motion, or what now? The rest of them are all
They're not in forty, on east, so we got, like, the Henderson Planning Board, three eternity, appoint joint, if it's
Yeah, there's, there are two positions available there.
So it's, both of them will be accepted, okay.
I make a motion, um, we approve Dominique Lane for the District Six Planning Board and Board of Adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Okay, we can take a motion for the rest of them.
Make a motion to recoup the appointment recommendations, um, of all other appointments on the agenda tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And anything left?
The second item is to appoint a voting delegate for the Legislative Goals Meeting on next week. We have one commissioner attending, Commissioner Austin.
I make a motion, we appoint, um, Commissioner Sean Austin as the delegate for the Legislative Goals.
Where's that, where's going, what's that?
Legislative Goals for two days.
Oh, okay.
It's in Raleigh, uh, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion, all in favor, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
One, one thing, uh, Colonel Taylor?
Well, I think I would vote on the other two. I mean, I know I don't understand everything about the law.
Have a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.